Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Queens made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rhodes made the second. Is there any discussion? A call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty. I'm going to make a-- I'm asking for a motion to go into closed session for three reasons: applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay for extra duty, or any other personnel matters. The reason for this is public discussion of applicants and employees' names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive personal and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. Second reason is for discussion of ongoing negotiations with King County Public Schools' bargaining units. The reason for closed session is to maintain the integrity of the collective bargaining process. Final reason is administrative function, discussion of board norms. The substance of discussion is considered administrative function outside the scope of the Open Meetings Act but is discussed during an otherwise closed session pursuant to Article 3-104. I am looking for a motion to go into closed session for those reasons. Ms. McKenzie has made the--
Ms. Dorsey.
Oh, shazam. I didn't see Ms. Dorsey come in. Ms. Dorsey made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie made the second. Is there any discussion? A call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We're-- I'm going to gavel us to go into closed session. We should resume open session at six--
Kent County Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. First thing I want to do is report on closed session. We met in closed session to discuss personnel, discuss collective bargaining, and for administrative functions. In that meeting were five members of the board, Dr. McComas, our attorney, Adam Costas, and for a while, Mr. Hushen, Director of Human Resources. We did not take any action in closed session. Next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Swanson, would you lead us in that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we've got a number of... Six items on our consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie has the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rhodes, a second. Is there any discussion, any questions, any comments?
One quick question for consent item letter D. Where would the minutes for the Special Board of Education meeting be?
They were attached. They were part of our agenda. They were there.
Yeah, that was our meeting from last week.
Did that answer your... Okay. I call for the vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ms. Swanson, you can approve everything but personnel.
Aye.
All righty. Public participation. Mrs. Manley, did anyone sign up? Oh, I'm sorry. You mean the vote? Okay. Well, it's all under consent agenda. Okay? Okay. I see the asterisks. I know what you mean. All righty. Same wavelength. I got you. All righty. Did anyone sign up for public participation? All righty. Dr. McComas, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, great. Well, welcome everyone to this evening. Few things. I want to launch our super intense report by showcasing our career and techno education programs, often referred to as CTE. And I want to thank Mr. Porter, who worked as part of his role supporting CTE programs to pull this video together. And this is just one example of the type of public relations information resources that we want to pull together for other aspects of our school system. But this is an example. And Mr. Porter, if you could play our CTE.
Yeah. Find your pathway with career and technical education. Start thinking about your future, rebuilding your career. We're doing enhanced programs that will feel interactive and interactive. The program sets for including hypercultural science, technologies, project leadership, engineering, construction, transportation, digital technology, computer science, major company development, health occupations, broadcast communications. The program is designed to provide for each program. It is available at scale. When the year needs closing or looking to master advanced program, it is possible to access it. It's running out of technology. It's a massive portfolio of information in its work. For more future. Engineering isn't just building. It's creating design for the best and solve problems. It's like a computer-aided design for that. It's a place to explore project insight, learning, and building design. It's a simple people's work and it's... It's technical skills by being hands-on task, including suspension and... ...and performance. Stay learning by performing repairs on your own vehicle. It tracks the trade students' work for designing and solve problems. There are a lot of types of tools and building processes. There's many tools and protocols and how to... Construction trade students will experience a variety of construction techniques, including woodworking, construction... It includes open damage management program, devaluable stuff. It stands sanitation and safety regulations in the West Forkham's... ...including front house, back of house, and management. Earn while you learn with the apprenticeship Maryland. Job training... Experience your chosen industry firsthand. Learn from professionals and make connections. It's in the field. Watch your healthcare who are in high school graduate with a start in your safety... Practice in a simulated lab environment with real-world scenarios like... Practice in a simulated lab environment with real-world scenarios like... Doing safe patient transfers. Ready to shape the future? With our classes, we're individual teaching track days. Develop engaging lessons and get practical experiences while working along with... For various teaching styles and build confidence in our support environment. Grow your future with hypercultural science. And drinking lots. Explore squares and food production, environmental conservation. When we're on line radio, we're recording music and... In public speaking situations, psychology, sales and marketing, business operations are possible. Your future. Maryland Fire Rescue Institute creates high schools and fire... Build confidence and discover your passion for nothing else.
Yeah. It's amazing things that students have the opportunity to do. And I, again, thank you for celebrating. This is just the beginning of bringing forward many of the different opportunities that our school system has to offer. And so stay tuned. We'll have more of those, not next month, I will say, but in upcoming, in the upcoming school year. So now that I've highlighted our CTE program, the next thing I'd like to talk about in a super intense report is to give our next steps of where we are with our middle school project of trying to build a new middle school facility. So I'm pleased to share that last week, the IAC, which is the Interagency Commission on School, on construction or school construction, met and they authorized an extra 3.5 million to go towards the Kent County Middle School project in the first year of construction, which hopefully will be next year. So in total, the IAC has offered $7.5 million from the state to help us get the first year of the construction off the ground. At this point, we, the Maryland Stadium Authority, who serves as our project management service, they just last week also finished hiring the construction manager. So the construction manager, one of their first jobs is to do the calculations based on materials of what will the different years of the project cost in terms of materials and machinery and all of that. So I know I've got 7.5 million from the state to help us get started. The construction manager is working on what that dollar amount actually look like for the first year. And then we will be talking with our funding partners, the county commissioners, around what we need to do to try to get a shovel in the ground. Just to remind everybody of the timeline. If everything goes according to schedule, we are looking at breaking ground for a new middle school facility in January or February of next...
2026?
Yes. Mm-hmm. So we're really talking, what's that, about seven, eight months from now? Assuming that everything goes according to schedule. So that's my most recent update, and I'll continue to bring forward updates as they emerge.
Can I ask some questions? So I know that some of the pushback we got in the General Assembly this year was that, given, you know, given the, in their mind, the few number of students we have, we were asking for a building that was too big. So are we, we're scaling that back a little bit? And when does that process begin? And is that Dr. Lever that does that with us? Or is that the Maryland Stadium Authority? And when's the architect get hired and all that kind of jazz?
Yes, yes, and yes. So the architect was hired in October.
Okay.
November. The architect was hired prior to this past Thanksgiving.
And they did that. Maryland Stadium Authority did that, right?
Yes. The Maryland Stadium Authority is our project manager. Yes, the Maryland Stadium Authority is our project manager. So, they, in partnership, we had a few members of Kent County Public Schools participate. You know, architects came. I met with all the architects who were interested in applying for our project to serve as our architect. We met with them at the middle school. That was in October. They went through the application process and the interview process, all facilitated through the Maryland Stadium Authority Project Management. And then, we narrowed it down to Crabtree, Robar, and Associates as our actual architect for the program. Myself and our team have been working with the architects and the appropriate staff from the Maryland State Department of Education. We meet every other week on the middle school design process. We are now in the process of scheduling meetings for middle school representatives to meet and see where we are with the design. And if not in June and July, I will have the architects come forward with a presentation so the public can start seeing what the middle school design looks like. We did, to answer your question around the square footage, we have been working to trim the square footage and at the same time, try to preserve and optimize programming. You know, our challenges, we have, you know, our economy of scale, we don't have as many students to spread the cost out over. And so, there's all kinds of formulas that go into this process. I think the fact that the IAC gave us an extra 3.5 and our work in the legislature, I think there's a growing understanding that that is a legitimate challenge for us and that maybe we need some additional support around it. But we have been working to very thoughtfully trim where we could without compromising the programming. So, we're still, we're not at the final stage yet of the design. But we are very close to bringing forward some presentations, and the architects will come and present.
Is Dr. Lever still involved in all?
Yes, Dr. Lever still very much is. We could not do this work without his support. We just don't have the manpower capacity to do it, and he
So, are the, are the costs going to be lowered considerably for this reduction, or is it going to stay the same? Because the longer we wait, the costs are going to go up. So, and where's the funding going to come from? I know you have seven million, but we've got to come up with a lot of money.
Right. Well, the, you know, and that's just for this first year of the project, for the first year of what would be a three-year construction process from start, from the time shovels go into the ground, to the time that the fields, the playing fields are finished, right? And students can occupy the building prior to the fields being finished. So, just to paint that, the true length of the project. So, the, the funding comes from a combination of state funding and local county government funding. And typically, in school construction projects, over a three-year project, the first year, what you see is the proportion of local funding is highest, and the state funding is lowest typically in that first year. Then, in the next year, it kind of equalizes out a little bit more. Much less from the locals and more from the state. And then, in the final year of the project, you see very little from local and more from the state. And that actually aligns, for those who may not be aware, in the legislative process this year, we, our representatives, our delegate, and Senator Hershey put forward legislation to ask for a change in the formula. That legislation did not pass. However, we did rally a lot of the community, and we clearly made an impression because what the General Assembly did do for, to benefit Kent County Public School, middle school children, is the General Assembly did two main things. One, they authorized $150,000 in the FY26 budget to come to Kent County Public Schools specifically for maintenance of our current middle school facility, because we made it clear that deferring the project is not financially feasible because we have urgent maintenance issues. And so, they sent us 150,000 to help support that effort next year. And they authorize, pre-authorize, an additional $8 million of state money to come to our project. That preauthorization would issue an additional $4 million in FY27 and another $4 million in FY28. So, again, when we think about these three budget cycles, '26, '27, '28, the state has already given us an additional, what was it, 3.5 this year, for a total of 7.5 this year. They're authorizing the governor to give us an additional $4 million next, the following year, and $4 million in FY27. And then, the difference would need to be made up through local funding.
What's the total cost for the
I don't have that figure on me because we have been trimming and reducing, so the figures that I had memorized are no longer relevant. I don't, I don't want to say because I don't want to misquote, and you know, that can catch fire.
And one more question, because I assume whatever the total cost is over three years, they just might break that down based on the formula you just said. Do we know the total cost for the first year completely?
Again, I don't want to misquote. I want to get that. That's the construction manager that was just hired is the one who will help us really get a lock on that number. And I, again, I don't want to put the wrong number out there because, you know, it's a work in progress. But I will bring forward a more formal presentation. I look forward to the architects bringing forward their presentation so you can see it. It's, it's a truly game-changing opportunity for our students and our community and our faculty.
And just for, just for clarification, I just genuinely want a better understanding because obviously, I mean, you explained it, what didn't pass, and then, but then this other funding was released, so I don't quite understand.
What happened?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's a great question. And well, so two parts to that. What happened on the final day of legislation? I had no idea it was going to happen, and I found out the evening of Sine Dive, when somebody reached out and said, hey, did you see what they did? So, I don't know who was, who continued to advocate for us. I think our advocacy was so strong in both the House and the Senate committees that I think there was large enough support to everyone to say, we know Kent County needs additional support. They're just, they weren't willing to change the formula.
Okay.
Right? So, in the end, the, on the last day, the General Assembly authorized $150,000 in FY26 specifically for maintenance of our middle school, which is our biggest maintenance cost, and an additional $8 million to be dispersed, $4 million in FY27 and $4 million in FY28. So, it just, it really just happened. Final day.
Okay. Wow.
And so, that's one thing. And then, the other piece was the IAC, just last week, went ahead and increased, originally, the state was going to give us, was slated to give us $4 million to get started. And just last week, they increased that by another 3.5 for a total of 7.5.
So, they had that flexibility to make a decision at that level to do that?
Yeah. And I think that's really
Because it's their money.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't realize that they had that flexibility to do that. That's
And the IAC are the ones who established that funding formula. And so, and it's interesting because in the assembly, they, they testified against our request to change that formula.
They changed their mind, right?
Now, when you say formally, you're talking about the local share 50/50 split, correct?
Yes, yes, that, that, right, because it's, it's different by county, depending upon your wealth factors and how that, the whole formula goes into that.
So, are you saying that the county's going to come up with half the money for the building? Did I hear this correctly or not?
Well, the, the way the formula is for Kent County is we were originally a 50/50 county, which would theoretically mean that the state pays for 50% of the eligible square footage. Please underline and highlight the word eligible square footage. And that's where the IAC comes in, because the IAC determines if you have whatever size your population is, then that means you're eligible for so much square footage. And anything beyond that square footage, you have to foot the bill on your own, so to speak. So, originally, we were 50/50 for the eligible square footage. However, we were able to adjust that to by 15% less on Kent County and 15% more in the state because we had three 5% buff-ups. This will be much better when I put it in a written presentation. I was just, I was just going to give you a quick update. But the 5% is because our building will be designed with net zero energy. So, we have an additional 5% from the state around that, additional 5% because all five of our schools are a concentration of poverty schools starting next year. And we also qualify for the Community Eligibility Program, which is free meals for all students in all schools every day. And I forget the, I always forget the third qualifier that allowed us to get yet another 5% buff-up. So, with those, that, where it's 65% for the state and whatever the difference is for the locals, for eligible square footage.
That doesn't account any expenses for Kirwin, because that's coming too.
That is separate from Kirwin.
But I know that it's all going to be in the same pot. It's a lot of money.
Right. This is capital, I won't disagree, taxpayer dollars, taxpayer dollars. This is capital, dollars versus operating dollars, which is the budget we just finalized last week. And our student member's been patiently waiting. Yes, ma'am?
I just had a question. I know we've talked about this before, about what preauthorization means, because you said that the $8 million, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't a guaranteed. It's just the General Assembly is recommending that.
Yes.
The government approve it. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, thank you for letting me clarify that. So, with a preauthorization from the General Assembly, when I said that, so the 150 is not preauthorized, that was a directive, and we are getting that. The $8 million for FY27 and for FY28 is preauthorized. And what that means, from my understanding, is that is the General Assembly putting a note in that capital budget for the governor. They're basically saying to the governor, we as a whole assembly agree to this, and we want to see you put that in the capital budget for those years. The governor is the governor, and you know, in terms of the checks and balance system. And so, the governor does have the right to not do that. I don't foresee that being a problem, but, but just in the way preauthorizations work for anything, that's how they work. Thank you.
My only other question is just because with any kind of building process, there's always things that we don't expect. And so, if for some reason, the students needed, like, for some reason, the students couldn't be in the building, I'm just wondering, like, an emergency plan, what that would look like if
Yeah.
Something needed to change.
Right. So, our, the way we are designing the project to be built is, if you think about our current middle school campus, our students will maintain occupancy in our current building during construction. We will, however, lose the use of the fields, you know, where the athletic fields are. So, the building, the new building will be constructed on those fields while our students are still in our current building. And then, once we occupy the new building, the old building will be demolished, and those fields will, they'll, they'll become the place where the athletic fields are.
Just basically flipping.
Flipping. It's like you're building your new house in the backyard, and then you're going to knock down your old house. Now, if something emerged and we needed a swing space, I think we would have to visit our high school as our potential swing space. But I don't foresee that being a need at this point. But that would be the one facility that, you know, we would have to, because our elementary schools are too packed for that Wharton facility is not in a condition to receive students with the roof problems that we have there. So, I think our only building with all feasibility that would, we'd have to figure it out would be the high school. Sorry, Ms. Heps, sorry. I know you didn't know that. I had not been asked that question, but I think that's the only sensible thing if we were in that. But we are planning the project to maintain occupancy while the construction is going on.
Right. And that's what I was just thinking. I don't expect it to work out that way either, but I thought, gosh, if you had to do a quick switch, it'd be nice to just at least have some kind of a plan.
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
No, it's a great question. And so, okay, so that, I think, wraps up our exciting, well, you see, it's exciting. Lots of questions and a very exciting future ahead for us. And then, the last thing I will just say, and we will bring presentations forward on this, but I just couldn't hold myself back from two additional celebrations. You will hear more about all five of our schools are green schools now. We just got that, those final schools were acknowledged this year. So, we have a presentation later today. And then, two of our elementary schools just reached accreditation for Judy Centers, and that's Rock Hall Elementary and Galena Elementary. So, Ms. Jacobowitz will bring forward a presentation, I think in June, we said, on that. But I just wanted to celebrate that good news because there's so many things that are happening right now as we wrap up the end of the year. That concludes my report for today, and thank you for your time and attention.
Stand by for commission. Is that you, Mr. Hushen?
Yes, it is. President, thank you. All the school board members, tonight, I stand before you to honor and recognize four incredible staff members who embarked on a journey just about three years ago through a partnership with Bowie State University with the fortunate funding of the Leeds Grant, where these four individuals just recently, within the last few weeks and last month, have achieved their doctoral degree in education. As I said, they have put a tremendous amount of time and effort to reach this degree in just about three years. They are demonstrated leaders in our school system. They've all have taken on various leadership roles in their time here, specifically at Kent County High School. In addition, these four individuals are also in pursuit or going to pursue National Board Certification, which will be the first set of staff that I think we have that have both a doctoral degree and the National Board Certification. So, if everyone can join me in honor, Dr. Jessica Cloud, who is our head teacher, and we also have certified math teacher, and helps us out with some math classes at the high school, Dr. Devon Jenkins, who was our high school head Dr. Cheryl Bachman, Dr. Karen Saunders, the board, and Principal Hemstetter, Gina Jacobowitz, if you can come up and join us, so we can take some photos and
What's the matter with you guys? Alrighty. Was that it, Mr. Hushen?
That's it.
Okay. We're moving on to board discussion. Alvin, we'll start with you, my friend.
Hi, everyone. I don't have much to report tonight, but I just wanted to recognize and appreciate all of the exciting things that have happened over the past month. On my second, Kent County High School hosted the annual Mental Health Resource Fair, and as well as the CTE Capstone and Awards Night and Ag Day last Friday, which my little brother got to attend and loved. Wednesday last week was also the day of the KCHS Brigade of Blue Spring Concert, which was a great success and a lot of fun. I also had the chance to attend the NJHS pinning ceremony at the middle school last week, as well as their concert, and the Arts in the Garden event at Garna Elementary School. I really love all the programming going on at KCPS, like, all the time, and it's just really, gets really exciting at the end of the year and as the weather gets warmer. And I wanted to thank everyone involved in making these events possible, because it is hard work to organize and corral kids from all these different age groups. But your word "hard" really makes, sorry, makes really fun and uplifting programs possible, so thank you. I wanted to congratulate the various doctors. That's like so awesome. And yeah, that's, I'm just really happy that Kent County High School and Kent County Public Schools get to have such dedicated teachers that are so invested in their teaching. I don't know. I just, I'm really, I'm feeling good tonight, feeling happy about Kent County Public Schools. So, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. I will give a shout out. Alvin is the new I will give a shout out, Alden is the new drum major for next year, so. Alright, Ms. Dorsey?
I don't have too much to say tonight, but I do want to thank again Dr.
Ms. Dorsey, could she get your microphone? Thank you.
Said I don't have too much to say tonight, except for I would like to thank Dr. McComas and all of the staff that helped her work on the budget and, which I know was not an easy job. So, and I know that there was no decision that was, that we can really be overjoyed about, but I do believe that we can work with what we have decided on or what we have to deal with. I believe that we are a strong school and we have a strong superintendent. We have good staff members that, and teachers that care about our students. So with all that, I believe that we can work together and, and make it work for the students and they can still be successful. I'm hoping that sometimes when things aren't as easy, it helps us to work together the more, to try to make things work out. Working with, put it this way, working with what you have sometimes helps us to work harder, helps us to see what it is that we really need to do or take that second look so that we can do something a little better. You know, we won't have as much, sometimes you don't have as much to work with, but you can still work it. So I just, I'm thankful for that and thankful for people who's willing to, and staff members who's willing to come together, stay with us and, you know, work hard right along with everyone else to try to work everything out. Always look at the, our high school principal, who, her heart is in it and I just love that. I appreciate you for all the hard work you do, I appreciate everyone. Everyone adds something, so that's all I really have to say. And I myself will continue to pray because we have a lot of things that have come to pass for us. We were talking about the construction for the middle school. We weren't looking at having the funds that we have on today, you know, last year. So, you know, all things work out for the good. All we have to do is just keep on doing what we do and keep on hoping. And all things will work out and most of all, keep praying.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie?
I had the opportunity to attend the CTE showcase portion and of that showcase and awards night. And I was just truly impressed by all the projects and poster presentations on display. The students that I spoke with were definitely prepared to share about their work and I just appreciated how welcoming they were. Kudos to all of the CTE staff for their commitment and openness to showing our students how to pursue their goals in a way that very much connects to the community around them. I saw many projects that served a specific purpose in supporting either some, either the school community or the community in general. It's a wonderful thing when our students create things that lead to a lasting benefit for others. And so Maryland itself has a vision for CTE that each student has access and the opportunity to engage in programs that align to high skill, high wager, in-demand careers that prepare them for the global economy. And having just gone through my first experience with determining the budget for next year, it's my hope that this board can be more supportive of our students perhaps through policy development so that their college and career readiness needs are better met. There are many good things that are happening with CTE, but there's always room for improvement. And it's important for us at this level to get a better understanding of the needs and hopefully in time that those most affected by the programs we offer have more input in the direction we take because the reality is that students may take a CTE but then do something completely different as soon as they graduate. And so as a board member, I would like to know more about what students are actually choosing and then, and why, and then see how we can make adjustments to any resource allocation that provides a better return on, on our investment and is honestly more aligned with the blueprint. And so I'm hoping to keep reiterating that I support the blueprints pillars, especially related to career and college readiness, but I'm hoping to keep advocating for certain requirements to be better grounded in reality that we have more flexibility to achieve the intended goals. And so as for policy development, I very much look forward to having access to the policy tracker before the start of the next school year so that this team can address policy adjustments that need to be made at this level to better serve the needs of all students. We have our challenges, but I'm honestly really excited about our future and how improved accountability at every level, every level, including this one, is gonna help us achieve our goals. I also wanted to highlight what a wonderful spring concert that Alden mentioned that occurred at the school on May 7th. The whole evening was just awesome with performances from the show choir, jazz band and concert band, marching band and color guard. And with every performance, it's abundantly clear why they are winning awards because the whole night was just impressive and it's just so fun to watch. And please be sure to look out for our marching band at the Tea Party Parade on May 24th. And lastly, I also wanted to recognize the family fun night at the middle school, coordinated by our, our Title I Family Engagement Council. The weather was rough at times, but it still seemed to be well attended and it was clearly well organized with all kinds of fun games. And I saw a lot of community partners there with resources and some treats as well. Events like that really capture the spirit of community schools and how they're intended to function. And I just wanted to say thank you to the Family Engagement Council for planning such a fun night for our students and families.
Thank you, Mr. Queen.
Good evening, everyone. I was also able to attend a lot of events. I will say this, as you said, it's getting warm, it's a lot of stuff to actually choose from. One thing I actually did next, last month with some fellow board members was attend the Kent County Public School Award Ceremony, where we acknowledged some of our teachers. It was a great way to show appreciation to them and it's a lot of young talent in our school system. So I definitely, and I was a presenter as well, honored to be that. So I, I like what I see as far as not only the demographic of teachers, but the enthusiasm around them being recognized and receiving awards. Over the weekend, I was in Perryville at the Kent County High School Varsity Tennis Regional Matches. Well, because my daughter made me go, but I was there, she had her first regional. She didn't fare too well, but I know she loves tennis and a lot of that has to do with the tennis staff pushing kids to really fall in love with the game and find their own lane within tennis or shout out to the entire tennis staff. Also congrats to Sebastian, I don't wanna butcher his last name, but I actually watched most of his matches. He's a pretty good tennis player. He does all the things that I try to tell my daughter to do, but he was, he was definitely out there representing very, very well for Kent County Public School. So definitely shout out to him and good luck at the state level. I was also able to attend the National Junior Honor Society at Kent County Middle School, where my daughter Peyton was actually inducted. It's good to see that many kids, because I went one time before and it looks like it was more kids this year at the middle school level. But it's good to see that many kids getting recognized. Your brother was recognized, inducted as well. So a lot of good company up there from some of the kids I see. That was a great and well-attended ceremony as well. Also, I'll do a quick shout out for my daughter Peyton. She also won the seventh grade student of the month last month at Kent County Middle School. Also attended the Kent County Public School Student Art Show that was at the high school. Saw Trish there as well. It was a lot of good art pieces in there at that show and it was all across the auditorium. And you could just go through and have your picks of what you like and what's your cup of tea, so to speak. It was everything from buildings to animals to paint, et cetera, et cetera. You name it, it was actually in that art show. And to see that many pieces of art from our students, to me, I told my daughter later, when we were talking about it, it was mind blowing and that was my first time ever going. I didn't know that many people actually participated in these type of events. So I definitely will be going back next year. Another shameless plug, also with that, my daughter Aria actually won first place in the paint and drawing category. Think she drew pop art and she drew Stitch, maybe you know what that means. I don't know who Stitch is, but okay. So that's it for some of the awards and I know I'll be going to an award ceremony Wednesday and a couple of other later this month. Also, I did wanna say this after our budget meeting. I just wanna offer some clarity on some of the things I might have spoke about because I don't want everyone to feel a certain type of way about my words that I chose. But first, Dr. McComas, in my opinion, I think you were very transparent in painting a picture of where we are, where we need to be. You showed professionalism, accountability and actually empathy. And you gave us two choices where we can actually discuss and go over and talk about what we could do. Also with that, because a lot of times when I say good job to you, I think because I speak for the public and I say certain things, it, it might get lost that, when I say you, I mean your whole team. Yeah, so Dan, Alicia, both things, Stan Deville, Dan Hushen, Alicia Stewart. By no means, when you hear me say negligence, I don't wanna ever have an employee in our school system feel like I'm pointing a finger at an employee. I would never do that. I know you all come to work every day and give your best. More so when I was speaking, it was like elected leadership and then I want employees. So never, ever take it as I'm speaking to you all, I would never do that. I follow protocol, I would actually go to the superintendent about my concerns. So I don't want you all to feel belittled when you all are going through the process just doing your job. So that's never my intention with anything that I speak on. Also, I wanna clear one more thing, because it did bother me saying it because it didn't come off crisp enough when I spoke about it. Your strategic plan and vision, yes, you do have a strategic plan and vision. It's just when I was speaking, sometimes I speak for the people who don't believe they have a voice and I'm their representation. So sometimes when John Queen say "we," it doesn't always mean "me." Because me, I know personally that you have a vision and you actually showed us with the theory of action and steam and those things. And what I should have said is, we as a community and elected board member look forward to what you will present in your strategic plan in the future because you have said on record that you had to get through the budget. And I've heard that behind closed doors, private calls and publicly. I just wanted to clean that up so that way for you, you know, professionally, you know I respect, you know, some of our conversations. I just didn't want you to feel some type of way, like it was a cheap shot or like me getting on my superintendent trying to make a grand stand. That wasn't really the gist of what I was trying to say, so apologies for that. Also, shout out to the county commissioners for stepping up. I know sometimes when we're in the community and we say we're going to the county commissioner, sometimes it's a little bit of despair or like hesitation, but so far publicly they have done exactly what they have said they were going to do and that was help us meet the deficit and the shortfalls in our budget. They told us if we do something, we do X, they'll do Z. And so far, they have been three commissioners of their word as it pertains to the education system, so.
Thank you, Mr. Queen.
Other than that, great job everybody across the board and I do look forward to some of the things I've been hearing for the future as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes?
Okay, I just have a few things to say. So I attended the Interact Club Meeting last month at the high school and this is an affiliation with the Chester Town Rotary Club. Eighteen new students were inducted. They do charitable work in town. Last year, a coat drive to Hope House, local cleanups and the help at the Tea Party booth. Ida Nab, congratulations to you for what you've done. And I think tomorrow, isn't there an Interact event at the high school?
It's the luncheon, yes.
It's a luncheon, yes. Okay, then I wanted to give a shout out to the Kent County High School Brigade of Blue. The spring concert was really nice. Jody Boards, Director and Marilla Kraus, the color guard and choreographer did a great job. The seniors were recognized and the passing of the baton went to, congratulations.
Thank you.
By the way, the music and flag presentations were so well done. May 8th, the LAX team won the playoff game with North Dorchester. They're playing tonight, congratulations and hopefully they're doing, oh, I don't know.
It's not going well.
And lastly, I attended the Kent County, the fun night at the Kent County Middle School and it was really a nice event. I just gotta say, I, I never tried bubble soccer before and I found out what it's like to fall down. But that was great. And Dr. McComas, I just have one question for you. I know you're working hard on the middle school and that's gonna take some time. Are we gonna do anything about working on this building? Can you put together a budget so we might look at the options of moving?
Right, as I, I think I said last week, but there's multiple steps to that. And I said, yes, I would look into that and, and work with our county partners around that. I, I'm not here tonight to give you the exact timeline of when I can make, you know, a change of air location, but I already said I was committed to researching that and I am. I'm looking into that.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys. Today I attended, I've been attending every other week, 12 weeks, the MAE legislative committee. So today they did an update on what happened in the general assembly and I made a couple of notes of some legislation that did or didn't pass that I thought specifically would impact us, that some of the issues that you guys have brought up during the last couple of months. So first of all, MAE stands for Maryland Associations of Boards of Education, focused on advocacy for local board governance and adequate and equitable state and local funding. Their big thing, a lot of times while they will or won't support legislation is they're big about school districts taking, being their own governance. They don't want the state overstepping and telling us what to do. Among their priorities for 2025 was sustaining the blueprint with alterations to align budget restraints because everybody is battling that. So a couple of things that I thought specifically had something to do with us. For example, we've had a lot of discussion about cell phones. So all, there were five, all cellphone bills failed. And the reason was, there's now, Maryland State Department of Education has a work group to study it, but there's only five school systems in the state that don't have their own cellphone policy. So I think their whole thought was this is overreach. There, what, one of the bills that failed was they, they, and this Frank, Mr. Rhodes, I think will have your interest because you've talked a lot about AI. The legislation sought to require the State Department of Education to develop guidance, promote training and workforce development on AI. That's probably not the last time we're gonna hear about it. It's likely to be more of this in future sessions. I thought this was interesting, the, the, the actual resource guide hasn't been written yet, but legislation passed to require the creation of a youth-centric social media resource guide to be published by the National Center for School Mental Health and the MSD. The guide must be distributed and posted widely, including to all parent teacher associations and in all school board districts, their websites, but it hasn't been written yet. Legislation passed to require anti-bias training extended to all board members that at least once in our term, we'll have to complete the same anti-bias training that all staff have to apply. Now, the, the, the lapses is there's no enforced mechanism. If a board member came to you and said, "I don't wanna do it," there's really, I don't know how you're gonna strong arm them to do it. There's, there's no enforcement of that yet. One of the things that did fail, as we all know, was Senate Bill H. 843 and House Bill 736, which were alterations to the local cost share, which is, we were the only school district that would have been affected by that. And the legislation we're trying to get changed so that the 50/50 cost share ends up being more advantageous to our, our county. They can't afford to pay for, for 50% of a new building. And I think that's about all.
The only thing I wanted to add, just that you didn't mention was.
House Bill 161?
No, actually.
It's on my list.
It's SB 310 about youth suicide prevention and gambling awareness. And the only reason I wanted to highlight that is because of my kids, who are young adults, they, they have already talked to me about parents that are struggling with gambling problems. And so I just wanted to say that this is a really relevant thing for us and I was, I was glad to see that our state's recognizing that it's a problem. It's a thing that can really creep in and, and cause a young person to become very hopeless if they suddenly find themselves trapped in a death situation that they don't know how to get past. And so it, I just hope that, you know, our system will also, you know, incorporate that in, in our, in our, and you know, I mean, I know we already addressing youth suicide prevention, but certainly that's an issue that needs to be, yeah, absolutely.
Well, two, two other things that I will mention. The legislation for the blueprint was 91 pages. So that is, and the other thing was House Bill 161, which was the curriculum. It started out as a discussion really about health and sexual and, and whether parents had an op out. By the time it was finished, curriculum guides and courses of study, the content standard's gonna take place at state level and the curriculum discussion will be here at the local level. I mean, there was, there was a lot. Oh, the other thing I want to tell you is MAE did an amazing job. If you get on their website, which is WWMAE.org, they've got an entire presentation of every single bill, how it went through the legislation, what MAE's position was. So if you have some downtime and you're looking for something to read, that's it, alrighty?
You said gambling.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah, it's. It, it's becoming a very serious problem and, and, and that it, yeah, to the point where, like I said, my kids have friends that, that, that are struggling. And, yes, with gambling, yeah.
Oh, you mean like, uh, I know what you're talking about.
It went mine.
It's, it's because everything. Really accessible and, and a young person, just like any other adult can get caught up into it real quick.
I agree, that's.
Um, and, and it can get scary for them, you know, when it, it is.
Alrighty, uh, education services, is that you?
Uh, Dr. Walker, here she is.
Alrighty, the telehealth. Good evening.
Members of the board, tonight I bring forth the first reading for policy JLCD. And this is student participation in telehealth appointments in secondary school. And which we must have in place for this coming school year. The purpose of this policy is to establish clear guidelines and procedures regarding the availability. Access and participation of students in telehealth appointments within secondary schools. This policy is designed to ensure that students have equitable access to telehealth services by their outside providers. Are supported in maintaining their confidentiality and privacy and are provided with resources to support for mental, physical and emotional health and telehealth intervention. So this is for medical appointments and for um, therapy appointments as well. So just some of the highlights, I know you've had it hopefully ahead of time and had a chance to, to review it. Um, so the appointment, telehealth appointments will be made available to students with parent consent. Of course, if students are eighteen, they can independently provide consent. Um, and we have to come up with a form to um, have parents and students sign. Um, some other highlights, of course, um, we will look out for privacy and make sure there are limitations to privacy because we're in a school. We have to make that um, aware to parents, but um, as much as possible, we have to give them a private setting um, to have their appointments. Uh, the appointments are scheduled during school hours and we will designate staff to manage. Um, the telehealth appointment scheduling as well as staff to manage. Um, the actual appointments of students need help getting online, um, and just knowing where to go and getting back to class. Also, um, so that would include, like, it might be a counselor, it could be the school nurse if it's a medical appointment. Or some other designated staff member. Of course, we have technology who will work with us and we have um, met. During the school year to start planning for this. So um, to make sure that parents and students understand. Um, they need to bring their devices and if they don't have a device or if it's not up to speed, then we provide them. We will always have one for them. Um, and then the school will regularly gather feedback from students, parents and health providers about the effectiveness. Telehealth services and this feedback will be used to improve service. So this is the first reading. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I.
You start.
No, I was just going to ask, uh, if there was any particular thing that prompted us to develop a policy or maybe it's one of those things where. We needed, you know, um, and I wondered, are we late to the game? In terms of other school districts doing this and did we model our policy over the language either at the state level or other school districts?
So the state gave us guidelines. We're not late to the game.
Okay.
Um, we got the guidelines in December and it's for this coming school year.
I didn't mean, when I said, maybe I didn't phrase that correctly. What I meant was are, do a lot of other school districts already have this? Um, or are we in the vanguard, so to speak?
No, they're, they're developing just like we are.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Queens.
As far as information, uh, I assume the information would be between the school. Parents, health providers, but outside of them would be like any third parties getting that information.
What information are you referring?
Whatever a student might talk about that's confidential and things of that nature, would it be?
So the, the student will be in a private room um, with their provider on telehealth. The other thing is parents are allowed to come to the school and have an appointment with the student or they can be online while the student is online. Um, but no one would be in the room with the student. They might be right outside the door, keeping an eye on the student. Depending on, on the situation, but um, the privacy part, not like I said, it's limited. It's just that you're in the school, you're in a room. You know. Sometimes even when you're in the doctor's office, you might hear a little bit. Not that we expect that to happen, but in the guidance, we have to let parents know that they're having an appointment in the school. And there are limitations, but we will protect privacy as much as we can.
Something like this, would something, I'd love to be like, maybe someone adminis- administering medication to a student?
No.
Right, and, and, and just as we have a normal protocol for like if a student needs medication for attention deficit or something like that, you know, that, anything, if, if. Treatment were to authorize something like that, they would have to go through a normal process with their nurses. So it wouldn't be part of the, the individual session.
Will the uh, feedback and evaluation, will the board be uh, notified or brought up to. Uh, speed or maybe reports quarterly or something of that nature of how this works and since this would be a new policy that we're looking at?
If we do, we like that, absolutely.
Right, and what I foresee with that would be probably the data around the number of appointments. You know, I think. Part of this um, guidance from the state, you know, we know in the last five years, telehealth has really taken, taken off and. I think to me, part of what's hopeful about this is it's, um, it allows students to remain in school and have more class time. Because they're not missing time driving to the appointment and then being brought back or maybe not being brought back to paying upon the time of day. Um, so I'm hopeful that this allows more students to, to be engaged in regular school.
Well, the other thing is I think making this available, I think will, making it easier, so to speak, I think more kids will. Take advantage of this opportunity. I hope they take advantage of this opportunity.
Sure, I think it's a convenience for parents too, you know, trying not to have to leave your job and.
It's for being here for parents and also, um, a lot of times. When children really need to go to the doctors, then we can be assured that they'll get there. As far as get the treatment that they need because sometimes a parent may have to juggle between. Um, you know, um, running into problems at work because they have to take off. And, um, child, you know.
Would this be something where in order to access this type of uh. Program or situation, is insurance coming into play? Like, let's say a student doesn't have insurance. Will they be able to take part in this if they're. Simply a Kent County public school student or will sure, insurance come into uh, play with this?
So I would say no, it doesn't come into play. This is um, parent scheduled appointments. That they can just take while they're at school. So we won't be handling insurance or anything like that.
Yeah, the school just provides space.
Correct.
So it's not like a teacher, like if a teacher, sometimes I think recognize behaviors or issues that a student or a parent might not, they can't like. They can't say, oh, I think the student would benefit from this. It would have to, the parent would have to be involved.
Correct. I will say that we do have some grants that cover students for therapy appointments who don't have insurance. Um, those are usually in person, but if they were, um, if they wanted, if the, if the agency wanted to do a telehealth appointment, they could do that, but right now we don't. Have outside agencies doing telehealth appointments. With our student.
For this, I assume this our first glance at it, but if this is to go into effect in twenty twenty-six, I assume the board should. Or Dr. McComas might want to vote on this by the way.
Next month. Is when typically, is typically the.
Right, two ratings, right. This is right. First, the first.
But we don't have to. I mean, when we, the next month, if when it's brought back to us, we may have questions. We, uh, see, we can. We can affect policy, we can't affect procedure. So if there's something that needs to be done as a board, we do it at the policy level. Is that correct?
That's right.
And I will say, of course, this has been vetted through uh, Mr. Constance and his team. As always.
Okay, that's good to know.
Is it okay if I, any more questions?
Think so.
Okay, is it okay if I skip around a little bit? Because we also have a procedure that goes with this policy. So to me, it makes sense to just.
Yeah.
So the procedure just, um. Has a little more detail for school staff who will be uh, working with the procedure. Um, so pending approval of the telehealth policy and for information only, um, procedure six hundred dash ninety-seven. And it talks more about the logistics, um, that we have to figure out how to obtain consent, the physical space, availability of staff. And um, procedures for misinstruction for students who miss time out of class. Students will be given access to telehealth services on an equal basis. Parents are permitted to attend telehealth appointments with students virtually or in person. And also the important thing is, uh, two weeks prior written notices required for all telehealth appointments. And that's just because we have to provide a staff member to monitor. And, you know, with the shortage of staff and different schedules, it's important to make sure that we can meet those appointments.
Who decides what's uh, equal access or equitable practices? For students to use this, who does, who makes that decision?
So basically what that means is any student. And parent who requests it as, you know, if they're in the middle or high school. They can have the appointment, but there is a little caveat to that because not all students are. And, and that's in here too. Not all students, I don't want to say suitable, but they don't, um, they're not matched well with telehealth. Appointments, so we will look at, um. You know, their academic and social emotional maturity, um, you know, their cognitive skills, things like that.
For parents doing the scheduling, is that just a matter of an email or a phone call or will there be like a specific form?
There will be a form.
Okay.
And this is only for middle school and high?
Only for middle and high.
Wow, let me ask this. Well, I assume the state mandate the middle school part, right?
Well, well, they mandated the middle school and high school.
Okay.
And that, that's because of developmental readiness, just the age of the children.
I just wanted to make sure the statement.
And another, um, point is we will not allow telehealth for emergency situations because that's not appropriate. Um, also, parents will be reminded, something happens during the telehealth appointment, if there's an emergency. Um, you know, what will happen? Like if a student has an emergency in a school, typically what we would do, you know, call ninety-one one, have the nurse assess, that sort of thing.
I assume if the parents are dissatisfied, they can opt out at any moment.
If they're dissatisfied in the middle of an appointment?
Yeah, over the serve, this day they've been born for six or seven. They decide after section seven, it's just not what they want to do with their child, they'd be able to opt out.
Oh, absolutely, because we are taking direction from parents when these appointments are and when they have the appointment.
This, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The space.
Yeah, yeah. And this is just medical, right?
And it's also.
What is?
Therapy appointments.
The reason I, because I saw the word medical in here, that's why I was asking.
It's for both.
Okay. But it is with your own doctor, right? It's your doctor that you already have.
Correct. And if it's, if it's a school based or if it's a provider that comes to the school for school based therapy. Um, the parents would already know about that and consent and have made that appointment and let us know about it. So we're not making the appointment, we are honoring the appointment. And I think that's pretty much it, unless you have questions. So that's the procedure that goes along with the policy once the policy is approved. And no more questions, I'll go to the next policy. Which is. Policy JLCD, availability and administration of stock bronchodilators for students experiencing asthma related symptoms or respiratory distress. And the purpose of these procedure of this policy is to provide school health service programs with information, resources and recommendations. For professional development training required for the safe management of a student with asthma related symptoms. Before a student experiencing respiratory distress. And to define roles and responsibilities of school health services and other school staff. Parents, guardians and students in the planning, care and education of these students. Now, that's, that's a lot. Um, all staff who have direct contact and supervision of students will participate in yearly professional development. Recognize the signs and, signs and symptoms of respiratory distress and procedures. For notifying the school personnel trained in administering a stock bronchodilator. So through safe schools, we will, um, all staff will take. Training on how to recognize someone who's having an asthmatic epis- episode or in respiratory distress. But there are other designated staff designated by the school nurse who are more intimately working with students. Who will know what to do and how to administer the bronchodilator.
And just a quick question, I'm, I'm more, is it the same thing as a nebulizer? Like, because that's what I, the word I'm used to, but maybe it's a different machine.
It's, I'm not sure, but I can tell you it's a rescue, it's like albuterol, it's a rescue medication.
What, what about coaches? Because I, I know during orientation for coaches, we, we get a little primer on an EpiPen, but um. Pick a, an athlete can have a.
Usually.
Situation.
Right. And they already do that with the other medications, right? Because this was developed with, um, Kent County Health Department. They sat down together and did. And they even, um, we took them through the safe schools training. Make sure that it covered everything it needed to cover and they were satisfied with it.
I suspect with a machine like this, you'd need like a power source. So I don't, I would think like a student would need to have like the rescue inhaler or something if they had an asthma attack on, on the field.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
No, just, I, I would think with this machine, you'd have to have access to it, to an energy source. You know, like it'd have to be plugged into something in order.
I don't think it's what you're thinking of.
Oh, okay.
Um, like I have a albuterol.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just like a handheld. Rescue.
Okay.
Emergency.
And so it's portable, not, it's not.
Yeah, that's what I was.
It's like a manual pump.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Some students have asthma plans already and they have medication. Um, if there's no medication or if it's a student that does not have a history. They, and they're having respiratory distress, it will be administered. Um, if they have asthma and they don't have their medication, we will still give them what we have. It may not be the same medication. But it's the same type of medication that will hopefully rescue. Um, stock bronchodilators have to be uh, stored in a secure and accessible location in the health room. They have to be cleaned properly according to, um, the manufacturer's recommendations. There is um, a line in here that says school personnel who carry rescue medications during athletic events and extracurricular activities. Will also carry bronchodilator. So there's that piece. And then for each incident at the school that requires the use of a stock bronchodilator, the health team or school personnel should notify the student's parent or legal guardian as soon as practicable. A student who requires the use of a bronchodilator twice in the same day will be sent home. And documentation of the incident, including documentation of the symptoms exhibited by the student will be kept in the individual student health record. There is also, the health department will also keep those numbers that you were talking about. They will keep track of anyone who had to have the bronchodilator administered. And then it just goes on to talk about parent expectations to make sure that they have an asthma, a, updated asthma plan, updated prescription. Um, for students who are known to have issues with asthma. And I think that's just about it.
This isn't something that a parent will have to give uh. Prove or consent for. This is almost like in an emergency, is this correct?
Correct.
Also, I just did some quick Googling and it looks like bronchodilators and nebulizers do the same thing, but in slightly different ways and the bronchodilator doesn't require energy. Well, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? And there is a parent letter that goes out to, at the beginning of the year to let parents know that we have this policy so they're aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the expectation is these, the two policies will come back to us. Excuse me, next month for the vote. Alrighty, the next thing is green school presentation.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Do this, okay. Um, my name's Amelia Marcosian. I am the. Um, my name's Amelia Marcosian, I am the Kent County Public School Science and. Um, L A C. And all of those good things coordinator, but I'm wearing my environmental literacy hat today. Um, so we have a really great celebration, we are proud to announce that Kent County is a hundred percent green school certified, and we are. One of just three in the state of Maryland that has made this achievement, which is really exciting. Um, so our school district very soon will attend the uh the summit, the green summit down at Sandy Point State Park, when we have. Quite a few of our students that will attend and represent our green teams. Um, so this program is through the Maryland Association of Environmental and Outdoor Education. And uh the green program is essentially just all about environmental literacy and being environmentally environmentally friendly. Um, I want to start just, I'm going to go through this really quickly, but uh a big shout out to our teachers that made this possible at all of our schools. A lot of this work was put in by our teachers ourselves and. Our green school partner, which is um Sultana Education, Jackie Dora is a big part of this as well, so. We have partners involved, we had teachers involved, and of course, our students were very involved as well as advocates, so. Um, big shout out to all of them. Alright, so our first certification that we received was with Kent County High School in two thousand sixteen. And just in the past couple of years, we've had Belina Elementary School, Rockall Elementary School, and Barnett Elementary School become green school certified. And then just this past month or so, our middle school received the certification. Now we are all certified and then we can recertify um the certification process last four years. So we research by each school in a couple of years. Alright, so we have green teams at each school, and these involve not only our staff, but our students as well, as well as our partners. Shore Rivers has partnered with Belina and helped create a beautiful space behind Belina Elementary School. Uh, we have a snap ed program that comes in and talks about um. Growing your own food, so we have a lot of different partners involved in our community. Uh, our teachers receive specialized professional development on environmental literacy and environmental literacy practices are embedded throughout our curriculum, science curriculum as well. Um, and our students are very much involved, we have some, they're meaningful eh environmental education uh projects, they're. Breviating, and if you ever hear the word me, that's what it means, so we have me projects in elementary, middle, and we have a really fun one in high school, hoping that a grant goes through. It should be really exciting next year. Um, and that is, I just may have it short and sweet with three presentations, but this was a big celebration that we are one of just three school districts in Kent County that received this. Thank you for your time, does anybody have questions for me?
I have, yes. Are you going to um uh assist community partnerships, you know, get together with Washington College?
We're doing our partnerships with Washington College, and we are working with them very soon on something for another great level, yes.
That's great.
Yes.
So this is all grant funded?
This is a gr- this is a program that we applied for, but some of these are grant funded, yes, through um. Butland um grants and different environmental grants, yes, and I have, we have one hopefully that we get through D N R for the high school.
You thought about maybe, I don't know if this would fit, but something like partnering with local farmers. Things of that nature for agricultural reasons with this.
We do have partnerships with Ag, um and that is through our Ag program with Jen Cool Death, who has has done a lot of work with our farmlands, so we do have some of that, and we have Kent Soil. Um, the soil conservation that we work with as well, Jenny Freeberry, so she also is partnering with us.
Oh, yeah, a lot of good partners.
We do, we have a lot of great partners.
Could you um just briefly share with us an example of a me we?
A me we, so our um seventh grade uh has a wonderful me we, it is the um Watershed Action Project, and they are analyzing. Um, the little creek that runs and connects to the Chester River. It's um Radcliffe, Radcliffe Creek, and they're analyzing water quality and different plant species and just the overall health. Of this creek that leads into the Chester River that then leads into the bay. And really um, big focus is over me, we are sixth grade is really in the works of developing a really awesome one around um microplastics. On the bay and working with Echo Hill is another one of our partners. But they're very much focused on human impact on the environment. And what we can do as stewards and what the students can do as stewards as part of our community and as all of our ways lead into the water and we eat the fish in the water and how that impacts. The the actions that we make impact our environment, so.
Thank you.
Two questions with that, is that when I see the kids out like by uh Gateway Park over there?
Yes, that is it, that's our seventh grade.
And also asked about the farmers, what about water?
What about what?
Water, the river locally.
We, so that is coming up, um, that's my hope, hopes and dreams for my ninth grade project, because we're going to be focusing on. Um, there's snakeheads, but I think the name is the Chesapeake Chana, and we're going to be focusing on blue catfish. And just that overall population and working with the watermen and that, so that is, that is to come, and I'm really excited about that project, so. Fingers crossed for the D N R grant.
And not to, I I just because I literally just heard it on the news this week, they were talking about how people are making money by catching these snakeheads and and.
Yes.
Thirty dollars a fish, it's, I think, pretty amazing.
Yes, and I think they're tagged fish too, but I, yes, um, so we are, we are gonna hopefully have a really fun project coming up, hopefully, with that. Any other questions?
Your title again?
I am, so I have. One more event to give.
The one with this.
The one with this one, I am the science and environmental environmental literacy coordinator. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Alright, you're very welcome, thank you.
Alright, Ms. Ms. Stewart?
We're going to go over tonight the monthly expenditure and revenue report, um this is as of April thirtieth. As you will see, and from June, um the down card has received about thirty four million money to date. My purpose for construction, we have um in our total fund five, which is our free service length to ten million, nothing for our front seven trust and agency. So total cost received is thirty five million five hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred forty four dollars and eighty six. When we look at our current expense to go to the expenditures, on average to date, we have received about eighty three percent. And we've expended about eighty percent of our funding. For school construction, this is just going for the past course so far. Our free service, about seventy three percent on average that we expended to date. Um, please note, uh if you are looking at that negative, we do have about two hundred and five thousand in fund balance. And then at the end, um, at the end of the fiscal year, we reconcile to recharge available for any of our school fee monitoring R I C service. There's other revenues such as the scale um allopart. And our restricted funds, about forty nine percent on average, we've expended with our restricted funding. And then the last is just the funding over the uh revenues and.
Um, the only question I had was just looking at the budgeted amount versus the um. I'm looking at that remaining balance and trying to understand, because I see the encumbrances, it's only like a little over seven hundred thousand that's left. So what happens to what's left over?
Which fundings are looking at? Page five, service, or school construction?
Page five, and then it's total restricted funds. Budget amounts, ten million, the encumbrances are a little over seven hundred thousand. And then you have the remaining balance, so I just wasn't sure, it seems like a lot.
So essentially, what we are looking at restricted funds, we're just going to include carryover money from a grant that we already have, for example, Title One. Um, we do have carryover funding from previous fiscal year to this one. As well as this can also include, um, if it was, let's just say, a grant that we had that. Just part of that carryover with that budget adjustment that is part of this. Um, essentially, any new grants that have came across, but sometimes even though we've been awarded a new grant, so we can get a N O G A, which is N O G A of notice of grant award. We can't start extending, so um there's a possibility that with the restricted funds, you will see that, you will see those costs in there as well. The encumbrance piece, we do monitor that encumbrance when we speak to our grant managers, so let them know what's going on there. Grant, most of the encumbrance will come from salaries, but there are encumbrances when it comes to our surprise and contractual clause or.
If there is anything left over, I mean, obviously, it sounds like this is very much separate from anything that would go into.
Yeah, the operating.
To, right, nothing goes into fund, nothing goes into fund balance with our restricted award. So it's just what has been awarded, there may be um. In looking at our restricted grant, there may be still some cleanup that we have to do, uh just to tie the loose end. So that can also be a part of that, which they're seeing be different.
It may help, um, Ms. Stewart, if you could help just unpack a little bit of, for example, you know how we carry multiple years at a time, right? So uh if, let's say, just you get a certain amount of money uh in federal grant monies, because these are largely federal grants. Um, Title One, let's say, you get that money technically July first of twenty twenty six. By the time that action comes to the school system, we don't actually receive those funds until when?
You might be three to six months out.
Right, so if it, we could receive those monies like in October or as late as January, right? And so what happens is. We are then given how much time to spend that out, right?
Pretty much whatever that duration of the grant is, if it's a year, you have until that following end time end date.
So let's take, take this scenario, right, we get awarded money in July, we actually don't receive the money till January, we then only have six months to spend that money. So that it carries over, so we get a grant amendment to carry over, so that's how you might have funds in F Y twenty five and F Y twenty six. All showing at the same time, and we're, and we always spend the older money first.
Gotcha.
And then also too, most of the time the state is pretty good with that, if there is an award that they know they have awarded later, they will provide us an extension. So then that will extend extend the grant award, but budget wise, we've uploaded because we were, we know that we're getting those funds and we're preparing our grant managers to start putting that money. For that.
For the part where I say eighty three percent, that's about total budget, correct? The total fund balance of our budget, of what we spent thus far this year?
So it's pretty much, yes, in average, so all the um percentages that you see in the detailed categories. You see the percentages at average on that, so on average, to date, we've extended about eighty three percent of what we had set aside as our expenses.
Still a question, because this is actually. Balance at two point one million. Would that be where the leftover money will kind of go back into the undersigned from, it will come from this actual, this one right here on this chart?
Yes.
I just wanted.
So proud of us, so proud of my board, they're getting it, sorry.
Alright, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that's.
Such a dark.
I've got a, I've got a question, so I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the restricted funds. Um, and I've never understood the percentage, how you can be over a hundred, hundred percent. So I'm looking at administration, and we've spent a hundred and sixty one percent, how does that happen, and right now we're half a million in the hole?
So a part of. This is me with overseeing the Maryland's and S R funds, where the time that we have the, essentially, when you receive a budget amendment, you should be adjusting the budget as you go along. So with me trying to catch up with the lack of the amendments and doing that, that's my error, so essentially.
Well, no, this was not me pointing a finger.
No, 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 this is me just being pretty transparent of what's going on, but what it will explain is, so essentially, we initially, initially budgeted. Eight hundred and fifty two thousand in administration, but in the budget amendment, we reduced a minute, we may have reduced. Let's just say instructional salaries at six hundred thousand. So essentially, you're going to now not have four million instructional salaries, but three point four million instructional salaries, and now. One point four million in administration. That adjustment is not noted in the budget, but it's noted in the expenses, so hence why when we expand on our grants, we make sure that we're allocating appropriately. The budget is just not updated to align with the updated amended allocation. So that's why you you'll see those adjustments, I'm saying maybe because I oversaw all of the COVID funding, and I do know that that was just example on my part, I made sure that we. Stay up to date with our year to date expenditures and encumbrances, but not updating as we go along.
You're doing all this for all?
Yeah, I do have a grant specialist within the COVID money payment that was pretty much um under the superintendent that I work closely with in our team. So I just took it upon myself to handle all the COVID money coming because it was so restricted, more than our general um restricted grants.
And I I just want to say to her point around how she really had kept up very tightly with the expenditure. That is why when the federal government pulled back on its reimbursement, we were in such. Right, we were in such good shape because she really laser like focused on that part of it and the documentation around that, so.
But just for clarification, I was not.
I didn't take it, I didn't take it that way.
How does anybody have a hundred and sixty one?
No, I don't take it that way at all, it was just. It um, yeah, for my grant specialist, she thinks she does this, that's her full job, so she's able to do those records and those adjustments in the budget coming.
So, so a couple of things hit me, the half a million. That's in the deficit right now, a hundred and sixty one percent, the other thing that sort of struck me is that, that we've. Uh, spent less than fifty percent, whereas all the, it seems like most of the others were seventy, eighty nine. So do, is that typical where like there's like a rush towards the end of the fiscal year where everything gets in restricted? That's when everything gets spent, or?
No, so what restricted you have to look at is basically we get reimbursed once we expand the funding. Even though you're seeing the percentages in that way, we're not necessarily over budget, the category itself may be under, but we're not in the hole. A half million or twenty nine thousand as you're seeing, you have to look at that as collective. Because that expense is being charged where it needs to be, but budget just didn't get adjusted to align with that um, the overages. But with our grants, sometimes if it comes to, um, we make sure we follow up with our grant managers, so let them know, hey, you haven't spent, what's the holdup? There may be an issue in getting the um, getting contact with vendor, getting an update, or then could be a budget amendment that we now have to wait. Um, because that happens a lot, when you do a budget amendment, you can't really continue to spend on anything that's changed, you have to wait till you. So we advise that they wait till you get an answer from assigned C one twenty five from M C E two proceeding. So it really is more so a time lag thing if I restricted, um, so it shouldn't really be looked at with how we function our current expense. Fund, because that. Um, kind of.
Again, it was, I was going to say, given what we just went through in the last month or so. And uh maybe super, I can speak for myself, but the questions that are asked makes me feel that other people are on the same wavelength. You know, I'm, because of the way I voted, you know, I'm going to be super vigilant about. Getting the money poured back into the five hundred thousand, so. I think there could be more scrutiny, I mean, I'm going to be paying super, super attention. And it's not meant, I'm just saying that now, it's not, it's not personal or anything like that, I just want to make sure that. We get the fund balance as much as we can, that we're going to have something that we can. Leverage next year too.
We totally understand and are prepared for that, also with restricted funds, if not until after six thirty, we can actually get back in and do our.
And I'm talking about things in general, I just happen to be.
Do you? Restricting and committed kind of operates to the point where. You have to wait till it's all done before those numbers really kind of even out, correct?
With our restricted, yeah, we don't, like for example, um, there's an indirect cost we pay, so there's an indirect cost rate that goes on our grants, we don't. Wait until the end because our indirect cost rate is not high enough or material enough to do a manual entry every month. So at the end of the year, we do an entry for that, um, we do the records for that with our health and. Our health, our F I C A, and our pension, so that's pretty much at the end of the year when the dust settles. Um, so that's another thing why we don't really see it as we go along, you see it as at the end.
No, I just, I, I mean, I just really want to pay attention, that's all.
Oh, that's not a problem, and just to you go through your points, when it comes to the current expense, this is where, now where you're seeing here. I know where you're saying it means a hundred and nineteen thousand that were over budgeted, I'm aware of that, I'm aware of the administration. Um, that comes with some of our legal fees, maintaining our buildings, but we already know these are common places that go over budget. However, that is something that I do plan to bring to the board, this is when the budget transfer will come forth to say, hey, we need to shift some money around. To make sure, because for audit purposes, I can't have any negatives in our, any of our major categories.
Well, I was going to say, ever since Dr. Kovas explained what administration really means. I don't get all freaked out when I see administration, because I used to think administration was a person, now it's operation, I get it. I don't get all freaked out when I see administration, because I used to think administration was a person. Now it's operation. I get it.
And that's where I was talking about the indirect cost rate. We capture that, that, um, Some of the revenue from the grant administering the indirect cost that goes into administering the grants, that's in administration. But we have to wait till the end to really see. And that's where finance, our e-finance plus, we're able to use some of the indirect cost revenues we got before that expense, like the value of seventy thousand dollars.
My last question for me. I assume, you know, we're, we're around a seven hundred thousand mark of money coming back to us. Do you foresee anything that might hamper that or less than that amount significantly? When I mean significantly, at least two hundred thousand.
If you have a school break, if you have to shut down the school.
Meaning from now to the end of the school year, right?
That can happen, yeah.
Yeah.
Are any other questions for Ms. Stewart? Alrighty, thank you very much. Ms. Manley, uh, is there, uh, any other? Okay, public participation. So the next monthly
Quick question, President Mickey, I, I just happened to notice back under the consent agenda, there was this donation approval. Did you, did we just, a blanket approve the consent agenda, including the donation approval?
That's what consent agenda is. Everything under there, the minutes, the donation, personnel.
Okay, I just, okay, thank you.
Now, for, for future reference, When you come into a meeting or whatever and you see a consent agenda and there's something you specifically want discussed or voted on differently, Then we move that out, you know, but, yeah. And that, that happens sometimes. So, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty.
And for the most part, donations are just information.
Yes, and I don't know, uh, Ms. Stewart, if you have anything you want to comment on this evening's donation.
Pretty darn nice.
Yes, I do. So essentially, essentially Lyndon Knight did, um, donate a grand piano for the art seminar for the Kent County High School. Um, there is a form that I believe the superintendent and the president of the board should sign a donation form. But they were able, I pretty much put the estimated cost around that. Um, I think it's going to work between six or nine hundred, nine thousand dollars. As far as the donation, it's not just the grand piano, but, um, I believe it's the delivery fee and there's something else that Would need addition to that they're going to donate as well. We don't have a hard number on the estimation, but, um, I was in contact with Ms. Morris and she would Will get back with me on that information, but that's pretty, that's a nice donation.
Thank you.
Alright, alrighty. So the next monthly board meeting will be held on Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at five thirty P M. With the open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at six thirty P M. Meetings will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, five sixty-eight Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland. I just want to remind everybody that the senior awards are on Wednesday night And we should all be together on May thirtieth for graduation before the next board meeting. Uh, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Ms. McKenzie has the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Queen, second. Is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?